To the Planning Commission meeting tonight. Bob Lundie, Chairperson, is out of town and as Vice Chair, I'll be running the meeting this evening. And on a personal note, I want the audience to know and the city to know that everybody in Cannon Beach knows me as Hank Johnson. I was adopted by that name by the previous owners of the wave crest. But my real name is Darrell and I want to be known as Darrell from this point on, particularly for meetings like this, and that's D-A-R-Y-L. So, that said, we'll proceed. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ritzley?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Chair Lundie?
Okay, you can hear us. Okay, our first item on the agenda is to elect Chair and Vice Chair for 2018. Do we have any nominees for Chair?
I move to elect Bob Lundie for Chair.
Is there anybody else that would like to throw their name into the hat? Okay, if that's the case, let's all vote.
Well, I was gonna vote, I was gonna nominate Darrell. Darrell.
Darrell. Well, in that case, then, let's have a raise of hands for those that want to have Bob Lundie as Chair.
I raised my hand.
Then, Bob Lundie, you've been nominated Chair for 2018. Are there any names for Vice Chair?
I nominate Darrell.
Second.
Any other names? Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
The first agenda item, this is Legislative Public Hearing regarding consideration of ZO18-01 and CV18-01 For Dune Management Plan Amendments. The City of Cannon Beach requests for zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan text amendments, updating the city's For Dune Management Plan. The Zone Ordinance Text Amendment request will be reviewed against the criteria of the Municipal Code, Section 17 dot eight six dot seven, dot oh seven oh A Amendments, Criteria. The Comprehensive Plan Amendments request will be reviewed against the criteria of the statewide Planning Goal 18. And the Land Use City Attorney would like to say a few things about this.
Thank you, Vice Chair Johnson and members of the Commission. I'm Bill Kabeisman and I appreciate the opportunity to attend your meetings. I historically haven't been, but I probably will be coming to a few more. And just wanted to take this chance to kind of talk a little bit about legislative and quasi-judicial hearings and some of the impacts of those, because a lot of times you get quasi-judicial, sometime you get legislative. Quasi-judicial is when you're making a decision on a particular permit for a particular home or two or three, and in those cases, you're acting like a judge and you're only-
I apologize to the vice and to everybody else. I thought there was going to be a national break and I was able to say that I was hanging up. I will listen to the recordings this evening. Maybe, I don't think I'm going to be able to follow them from here. I will be ready for next one, too.
Okay, we'll shut you off. Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks. And just wanted to talk, just for a couple minutes, about the difference between quasi-judicial and legislative. Where you're quasi-judicial, you're talking about one specific property or maybe two or three specific properties, in which case you're a judge, acting as a judge, and only the information in the record is important and you're sort of a neutral decider. This, what you have before you tonight, in all three cases, are legislative decisions. And this is where you're setting policies for the city. It affects a broad range of properties and that has some implications on a number of different things. One, when we, when we talk about your role as Planning Commissioner, there are three things to be concerned about are bias, ex parte contacts, and conflicts of interest. Again, as a quasi-judicial, you want to come in unbiased. You're making a decision based on the record and the criteria. In legislative, you're actually supposed to be biased. You're bringing your interests, your reasons for being on the board, to set policies for the city. And so, your recommendation should come out of your view on the matters. The same thing with ex parte contacts. Again, when you're quasi-judicial, acting as a judge, everybody should know the information that you're hearing and you're being a neutral arbiter. When you're talking about a legislative matter, again, you're informed by everything that you've met, everything that you know, and so ex parte contacts aren't as critical and so you don't have to disclose those. The one thing that does apply across the board, whether it's quasi-judicial or legislative, is conflict of interest. Oregon has a pretty strong prohibition of participating in decisions that will have a direct financial benefit or detriment. And so, if in fact you're, you're going to be affected financially by any decision, then you may have to consider stepping down. And when, if we get to that, we can walk, work through those prohibitions that are in the statutes. But essentially, if a decision could lead to a financial benefit or detriment, you need to declare it, but you can still participate. If a decision would lead to a financial benefit or detriment, then you have to declare it and you can't participate. And that distinction sometimes is hard to get to and it's much easier to talk about in specific instances rather than in sort of general. So, that was just, you know, a few quick minutes to talk about legislative decisions. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you unless there are questions about some of the things we talked about.
Okay. Does anyone object to the Planning Commission hear this matter at this time? Does any Commissioner believe that he or she has a conflict of interest?
I believe that I do.
Okay. Thank you. Does any Commissioner member believe he or she has a personal bias? Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Staff report, and there's a lot of attached materials to this, were prepared by Hannah Dankbar at Crest and I. You met her before at the work session, she's here tonight and she'll be speaking in a minute. What I wanted to do is go over, kind of procedurally, where we are, so the history of this, where you are tonight, and what's coming up ahead of you. And then I wanted Hannah to quickly go over the substance of the proposed amendments. Neither of us are planning on taking a very long time, because I know there's a lot of people here who want to talk. You held a couple of work sessions on this, first in May and then in October. And here we are at the first hearing on this. This is the first public hearing on this. There's four pieces of information in this proposal. There's the John Allen Report, which you received in May. There's a more recent document that was prepared by Crest that's labeled For Dune Management Plan. And then there are two pieces that follow that, the Comprehensive Plan Policy Amendments and Zoning Ordinance Amendments. And those are kind of, there's a, that's not a random order, there's kind of a hierarchy there from kind of the basis of this down to the zoning ordinance amendments, which is what we use in the day-to-day implementation of this or anything else. So, that, that order actually has some significance to it. Cannon Beach has been allowing for dune grading since 1998, at Breaker's Point, and since about 2001 for the presidential streets. For dune grading is allowed under statewide planning goal 18. There's, there's criteria from Goal 18 are in your staff report. We have to follow those, those are mandatory criteria. The big issues in my mind are related to the methods of grading and disposal of the sand, the size of those projects, both in terms of acres disturbed and cubic yards of sand removed, the timing of the project, and of course, the one that I'm more interested in any of these is kind of the nuts and bolts of our permitting process going forward on these. I want to point out that there's a, I'm gonna call it a typo, it probably is really just a stupid mistake on my part, at the top of page two, I said you could move 2,500 cubic yards and 25 truckloads. That's, of course, off by a zero, that'd be more like 250 truckloads. Fairly significant difference there. I apologize for that. In terms of, well, two things. One is, there's a fair number of written, there's a lot of written testimony in your staff report. There's an additional packet in front of you tonight that has some, all the written testimony that's come in in the last week since we mailed out the packet. And I cut that off at about a quarter to five. I stopped looking at the email, so I believe I have anything unless there was something sent very late in the day today. The Attachment A, the John Allen Report, that you've had since May, I believe it was, when you gave that presentation. I talked to John on a conference call last week and he revealed that he was actually looking to amend that. And he's, at first, he said those amendments are fairly minor, they just have to do with organization. But he then revealed that a couple of those amendments talk to two issues that I just mentioned, timing and methods of disposal. So, he gave me kind of a brief overview on the phone. I don't want to try to repeat what he said. I did say, will you have that revised report ready in February? And the Director Heminghaw, I said, yes. So, at the end of the hearing tonight, I would recommend that you continue this to February to take advantage of those revisions he has. I don't think they're big earth-shattering things, but they are directly on point with two of what I think are important issues for us. And he's wanted to expand or flesh out some of the things he said in his report. So, for that reason alone, I think it's worth continuing this. If you do do that, I would recommend that you continue it to February 22nd meeting. If you do this, give it a motion to continue mentioning the date and time, then we don't necessarily have to re-advertise for this. We might anyway, for convenience reasons, but we wouldn't be required to. As all legislative matters go, this one also is, at the end of your work, is results in a recommendation to the City Council. And we would schedule then a hearing before the City Council to receive your recommendation and more testimony and act on it. That's all I have. I would ask if you don't mind now, have Hannah come up and walk you through the nuts and bolts of the proposal itself.
So, I overlooked it, we haven't approved the minutes from the December meeting.
Yeah, and there's revised minutes from that in front of you, too. Am I right, Olisha? Yeah, so you may need to look at those revised minutes, if you want to go back and do the minutes.
Yeah, I want to get that out of the way.
While you're looking at those, I'll mention that Bob Lundie caught a number of changes in those and gave us those amendments. So, the revisions mostly reflect Bob's notes to me. Last month, it was a combination of me taking notes and Samantha transcribing my notes and listening to the recordings, so the minutes were not up to our normal standards. That was largely my own fault.
Well, I do see the correction on this wasn't in the original minutes, on some things I I move the minutes to be accepted. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ritzley?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
May I ask, Mr. Patrick, from the audience?
Yes.
Okay, then, back on, onto our original order here. Is there any additional correspondence?
Yeah, you have two packets there. One of, there's correspondence that was attached to the original packet and then another packet in front of you that's labeled Additional Correspondence that's received in the last week. So, that's all we have.
There's quite a lot there.
Quite, quite a bit, yes. Particularly on that additional correspondence, a lot of it is both highly technical and received fairly late in the day, so I'm not embarrassed at all to say that I haven't read much of that that was received today or yesterday.
Oh, should, shall we just take the time to read all through it?
That'd be past my bedtime.
I see. Okay.
Yep. Particularly if you're going to continue this hearing.
Yeah.
Right.
You're under no obligation to stop and read it.
Okay.
Some of those people who wrote those letters are here and they may be able to summarize that for you, too.
Right. Okay. The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff report and listed on the criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or municipal code, which the person testifying believes to apply to that decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal based on that issue. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the Chair, state their full name and mailing address, and appearing as, and if appearing as a representative capacity, identify who they represent. Are there any presentations by proponents?
Before you do that, could you hear Hannah's half of the staff report first?
Oh, okay.
I promise this won't take too long.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more-
So, your name and address?
Oh, I am Hannah Dankbar, I work at Crest. You need my address?
We've got it.
Okay. So, I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more on the four documents you have in your packet tonight. You have the background report, which Mark mentioned. I'm anticipating some edits, too, so we'll see what those look like within the next few weeks. And based on that report, I put together the draft For Dune Management Plan, where we created, we looked at the four management units, looked at the objectives, talked about disposal methods, revegetation, some of the big ideas we've been talking about. And then I took that document and created a draft copy heads of plan policies as well as zoning ordinances. And those last two things help implement the plan. So, as we move forward, I anticipate changes. And if one thing changes in one document, it goes right on down the line. So, this time next month, we could see all four documents looking different. So, I would encourage you, as we move throughout this process, keep looking at all those documents and see how they're changing and make sure the wording is all correct and everything. Like the dunes, it's a pretty dynamic project. And then also on that note, if we change one of the elements like timing or revegetation strategies or anything like that, that can also have a snowball effect where other parts of the plan change. So, I just want you guys to keep that in mind, that this is a big project and if we zero in on one thing, it can have an effect throughout the project. And I do anticipate changes to the documents within the next coming weeks and potentially months, so I'm around. And that's all I have to share.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, are there presentations by proponents? Oh, there aren't?
That was a much shorter hearing than I would have guessed.
Are there any presentations by proponents of this?
Could you define a proponent and an opponent?
Those in favor of this amendment. Anybody that's in favor of this motion on the sand dune management? Yes?
I'd be a proponent.
You, would you like me to state?
I'm not entirely sure.
Well?
I'm somewhere in between then.
Okay, why don't you come, do you want to make a presentation?
I wasn't, I'm prepared to do that, well, I'm prepared as I can be. I thought it was just a letter, yeah, I can cover a couple points, I think, before.
Okay. Come up and state your name and address.
This is, I've, I just realized I've been involved in this conversation since 2015, sorry. My name's Clay Newton. I live in Portland. My address is 1 Southwest Main, Suite 950. I just realized, I just realized, sitting down, I've been involved in this sand dune conversation since 2015 and not one time have I not learned something, including a different format that we have here tonight. I'm now a proponent for something, as opposed to being an opponent every other time. You know, it's interesting to, to sit here in this audience. I have neighbors here in Cannon Beach that I'm friends with, neighbors in Portland that are here tonight, we're friends socially. I've never considered myself purely an opponent to dune grading. I'm sure a lot of people would disagree with that or think I'm a real thorn in their side on this. But my concern has always been, if it's going to be allowed, to do it thoughtfully and carefully, because it is not just about one set of dunes in front of one set of property. So, I think Breaker's Point did a nice job, although we went back and forth, we tussled back and forth quite a bit on the last project that was approved for them. I think it was done nicely and have hope for future projects also being nicely, done nicely with, with other, with other, I guess you'd call them, projects up and down, different cells, I guess. I think one of the things that, that I'm most concerned about, that I think is most important for consideration is, dune grading is not something that is a part of a guaranteed bundle of rights for homeowners. It's something that they may be granted. And I think in granting that right to grade the dunes out in front, there's a lot of responsibility that comes with that. So, as you consider the plan before you, I urge you to make sure the steps that you've outlined stay in place, that they're clear, that they monitor and evaluate the effects of grading, and no portion of the grading be left in a system that allows other people unchecked or another group of people affected by dune grading or the accretion of sand in front of their properties. There's some specific items that I think this new plan, I'm optimistic about. I'm optimistic, or I'm hopeful, that experimenting with new beach grass could result in a lower dune profile for the homeowners. I'm highly concerned about experimenting in a environment as fragile as the littoral cell we have here in Cannon Beach. While European beach grass is a non-native species, it's probably also responsible for protecting many of the homes that are concerned about their views today. I'm not sure those homes could be in their places today if they didn't have that beach grass holding those dunes in front of them today. Will American beach grass protect them? I don't know. I think if you are going to allow that, it needs to be done very, very cautiously. Questions like, that are presented in the reports suggesting American beach grass does not capture as much sand, leave, to me, obvious questions as to what happens to that sand if it's not captured. Where does it end up? Do we have to grade more frequently? Are our structures inundated with sand? These questions, I think, are only really going to be understood once, if you allow that test of American beach grass. But again, I would encourage you to do it on a limited basis, as was proposed. I think another consideration around the vegetation is the frequency. There's some proposals, some suggestions in front of you that suggest a frequency that's really left unchecked. I'm a novotinist, but I can tell you that there's, if that's left unchecked, those plants have no chance to establish themselves. And if they can't establish themselves, they can't collect sand. That seems to me like a pretty straightforward logic. Maybe it can be proven in small samples otherwise, but I do think you have to be careful with One of the, one of the problems I have with many of the basic assumptions before you that I hope you'll consider, is that the definition of view seems to be not fully considered. I think instead of looking at view as if we're only looking toward the ocean, as if it's only a 180-degree view, it needs to be considered from a 360-degree perspective. I don't want to look at graded dunes. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm saying if you're going to do it, I don't want to see it a lot and I don't want to see it dramatic. So, do it in phases. Do it carefully. As I said, what Breaker's Point did last time? That's a great start. Allowing the dune crest to be taken down to the four foot above the 100-year flood elevation? I can't imagine what that would look like. Hundreds of thousands of visitors come to this area for its natural beauty. They don't want to look at that. It's ugly. It looks like a construction, it will look like a construction zone if not handled well. That needs to be a part of the consideration. These are state lands that we're talking about. There are some suggestions from an attorney hired by Breaker's Point to open the dune grading to make it easier than currently proposed. I would suggest you reject those. That's not a process that needs to be easier than what it has been in the past. And lastly, I think, as I said earlier, it should not be forgotten that the entire beach needs to be considered when developing a sand management plan. One of the things missing from this plan is a discussion about Chapman Point. Chapman Point is in a unique situation, the homeowners at Chapman Point are in a unique situation in that they have a deed restriction that prohibits them from grading for view enhancement. The grading that has happened to date in the Cannon Beach littoral cell has pushed sand north. It has affected those homeowners. Pursuant to Goal 18, they have not been considered in this, in this conversation and they need to be tonight or in implementation of any plan. It's not fair that any plan that you develop would risk continuing accretion of sand to those homeowners. As you think about implementation or some of the proposals you're going to hear tonight, I hope you'll think about limited, cautious, measured steps in moving forward, not some of the dramatic proposals that are going to be suggested tonight. Oregon has a long and proud history of preserving its beaches for all of its citizens. Carrying that mantle of inclusion and protection today falls on your shoulders. I wish you strength on your sword as I'm, as you defend the right for all of us, both here today and those to come in the future. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak as a proponent of these measures? Okay, there's, are there any-
I mean, Darrell.
Yes?
I'm confused about the proponent, et cetera, and too, I'm not sure if I should be speaking now or-
Are you in favor of this?
I, well, I'm not in favor of dune grading and I'm dubious about the planning of the vegetation.
Okay, but I'm asking people that are in favor of the sand grating to speak first.
Got it.
Okay. Anybody like to speak? Okay. Then, if there's anybody that is opposed to this, please come forward. Your name and address?
Susan Glarum. I don't know if this is pointing the right way. Susan Glarum, PO Box 108, Cannon Beach. Dear members of- Dear members of the Planning Commission, I wish to state that I oppose dune grading for view purposes at Breakers Point condominiums, I feel that lowering the dunes could endanger both the residents of Breakers Point and nearby neighbors if the ocean should overtop the dunes during a storm, king tide, or tsunami event. It is not possible to accurately predict the height of potential, potential waves, and I feel it would be better to be safe rather than sorry. Although I can sympathize with the condo owners who have lost their view of the ocean and/or beach, there are no guarantees where nature is concerned, nor is the city or any other agency responsible for maintaining anyone's view from altering over time. Trees grow up in obscure views, fences or new homes can do the same, even neighbors parked in the right or wrong place can obstruct views, where should the line be drawn to say that one person's view needs to be restored versus another person's? I cannot justify grading the dunes to the benefit of a few people when doing so could endanger many others who live or stay in the neighborhood. In addition to protection from flooding, the dunes, as they are, catch the wind-blown sand and keep it from burying the condo units and neighbors' homes, as it used to do when only American dune grass, Elamus mollus, was present on the dunes. This is the reason European dune grass was planted in the first place, the native dune grass did nothing to stop the movement of blowing sand to the east, as its growth habit is to grow sparsely, rather than thickly, as European dune grass does. I have included with these papers some photos of remnants of American dune grass I took recently at the foot of the dune at Chapman Point, which illustrates this. I am dubious of the wisdom of interplanting both species, as mentioned in the dune grading plan, has this ever been tried before, how successful was it? Can the American dune grass roots tolerate growing through and amongst the much more dense growth of the European grass? And how about the other native species that are proposed to be planted in amongst the clumps of dune grass? My experience is that once the European dune grass was planted, all the native species that were present before that gradually disappeared, such as seashore lupin, beach morning glory, coastal strawberry, sea rocket, and the beautiful beach peas, among others. Some of the species of native plants that are suggested to be planted here were never present in the first place. What makes it a good idea to include these? It's not that I am against the idea of replanting with native species, I love the idea, in theory, I am just really skeptical of the success of such a venture, when it is European dune grass which has caused the demise of the original native plants in the first place. And here is something else to consider, in the book Plants of the Pacific Northwest Coast, I came across this statement, seashore bluegrass is one of the best studebabilizing plants, perhaps this could be looked into as an alternative to replanting with European dune grass. I realize this is a very complicated issue, if you, as Planning Commission members, feel you must approve this sand management plan, please do so with this in mind, the most important part of this whole issue is safety of the residents and visitors to our town, not whether views of the ocean are restored to the owners of a few condos at Breakers Point, nor whether European dune grass is removed and replaced with native plants. It will be imperative that clear and enforceable rules are put in place that will limit dune grading to small amounts, rather than huge numbers of cubic feet of sand, and that regular studies of the project and reports are submitted to satisfy the legal requirements that in the past have been ignored. In conclusion, I appreciate the time and work you have all put into this issue, and I wish you wisdom in making your decision, thank you.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this issue?
I don't understand, I'm, I'm for grading.
State your name and address.
My name is Peter Fisher, I live in Portland, 3624 Northeast Clickitat Street, I have a condominium at Breakers Point, my condominium does not look at the ocean, or Haystock Rock, it looks back toward the creek. I am unable to access the ocean, because I can't get down the dunes, I have several orthopedic abnormalities, so my concern is me getting down to enjoy the sea and the beach as I had intended 20 years ago, when in fact I could do that, I now can't get down to the beach from my condominium, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that's on the fence? Would anybody else like to speak? State your name and address.
Yes, I'm sorry I'm late. My name is Ed Stone, I live at 4540 Northwest Malheur Avenue in Portland, I own a condominium at Breakers Point, I bought my condominium there in 1982, I'm an original owner, I'm there, I was there when the dune was 52 or 55 feet lower at the top than it is right now. When I bought our condominium there in Breakers Point, when my wife and I had small children, we could look out on the beach, and we could see our children running and playing on the sand, if we wanted them to come in for lunch, we could blow a horn, wave our hand, put a towel on the deck, or something like that, but now, we can't see the beach. The reason I was late tonight, my wife has Alzheimer's, and when I was planning to leave tonight, I was trying to get the televisions working so that she could watch them while I was gone, it used to be that she could walk easily down to the beach, but the slope there now is so steep that access to the beach for my wife is getting to be virtually impossible. My oldest daughter, her husband, who's 52 years old, just finished, two months ago, his third stem cell transplant, he has amyloidosis, which is a nerve disorder, he has a cane, he has braces on his legs, and he can no longer get access to the beach. And my business, before I retired some years ago, was a real estate developer and home builder in Oregon, and I had the opportunity to study, I was an active developer when land use planning came into the fore, and zoning and the rights of homeowners and so forth is something that I'm very familiar with. The folks who are here tonight that are in opposition to this dune grading, and come up with all of these issues that we've been hearing for, I was going to say months and months, but I mean years and years, because I've been to these meetings, they ignore the fact that this is a city, and we have zoning ordinances that dictate what kind of a house we can build, what the densities are in the neighborhoods, and what the rights of homeowners are, such as grading the dunes for view. And, and my statement I'd like to make to the Planning Commission tonight is that I love these people who are in opposition, and if they want to see all the plants, and if they want to see native beaches, and native dunes, and everything, well, go outside of the city limits, and enjoy those kinds of things that are kept in, in the areas outside of the cities along the coast, in the cities along the coast, we all have to work together, and we have to appreciate the needs of other people, and that's why we have zoning ordinances, and that's why we have this plan, and it's about time that, as homeowners here in Cannon Beach, which all of us owners in Breakers Point are, that we have the right to step up and regularly grade these dunes. So thank you for listening to my little event tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak?
My name is Sheila Wieland, I'm here representing Doyle Wieland LLC, we bought a home in Cannon Beach last fall, and remodeled it for a rental, but with the potential that in a year or two we will move in, and this will be our home for retiring, so this may be really familiar to all of you, but it's really new to us, so, as you're considering, I, we are in the presidential district, and I understand that that is one of the areas that will be heavily impacted by the grading aspect, and that a lot of the sand will be transported to other areas, and, so we do have questions just about the timing, the cost, it sounded like the cost could be divided by the owners, but it would have to be financed, or it could be financed, so we just have a lot of questions for that, and so I was hoping to hear some information regarding past projects, like I'm hearing that you've done it in other areas, and maybe you could kind of talk about some of the things that, you know, happened with that, so we would have a better idea of what's to come, or what might be to come, but we had questions about the start time, the cost, where the trucks would be most heavily using the roads, especially in the presidential district, if there'll be the grading, the beach access, the timing of the year, we do have a rental, it's a new rental, it's, you know, could be really tricky with trying to do that, and I, I think there's, could be great benefit to the dune management, I know that, you know, sometimes if it's going to continue growing in one area, and one area is eroding, it may be time to do something, but there are a lot of, you know, costs to certain people, and there are a lot of things to consider, so I'd love to hear a little bit more about the past project that you've done, and, and what you anticipate for this one.
So, what specific, you wanted the cost to?
Well, just, I mean, do you have any projections of cost to individual owners? I mean, that's a big question, if it's, that we have to fund part of the bill, you know, we'd kind of like to know what that would be before we?
Mark? Yeah, I can respond to that, and I probably should have covered this in the staff report, and Cannon Beach, historically, the city has not played a financial role in doing this, this has been entirely borne by benefiting property owners, in the presidential streets, there's a group of property owners that organize themselves, I do not know how much it costs, and I do not know how they allocate those costs, it's really none of my business as a city, all we do is regulate it from a permit point of view, with respect to time, location, size, volumes, revegetation, things like that, if you want to review some of those permits, I'd be happy to share them with you.
I would love to, and then also maybe get the information on the name of the group, so you can contact them, and find out some more.
That's public information, I'd be happy to share with you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody would like to speak?
For your record, Chairman Johnson, my name is Tim Ramis, I'm a lawyer, I'm here on behalf of the Homeowners Association for Breakers Point, you have a letter that we presented.
The address?
Yes, it's 2 Center Point Drive, Lake Oswego, 6th floor, thank you. We've submitted a letter, and also some proposed amendments, so I guess in a technical sense, we're here as opponents to the current draft, but practically speaking, we're here very much in favor of the work that's been done by Dagami, and by Crest, to advance and update your, update your plan, so we appreciate that work, and generally in support of it, but here to address two general issues that drive some amendments that we've suggested. One is the maintenance and promotion of good public access to the beaches, and the second is to establish a reasonably efficient administrative process for processing permits. We want to note clearly that we're not here advocating changes in your fundamental standards, your standards for access are good, your standards in terms of minimal dune height meet all the requirements of Goal 18, and Dagami's work has certainly shown that they meet the requirements of science, so we're not here to advocate those changes, but the implementation of those policies is the concern we want to talk about. First, protecting public access, your current policy in the current code is a good one, it requires access to the beach to be imposed upon developments when they happen, you have a history of conditioning projects to do just that, including Breakers Point, so the problem is not with the policy, the problem comes in this way, if you require public access to a beach, you mandate it, and it gets constructed, and then through forces of nature, sand comes in and wipes out that public access, there needs to be a way to recover it, and right now, there's, your policy on that subject and your permitting processes are not synced up, and so, we've suggested some language that would do that. Joseph Schaefer, a land use planner, in a few minutes will speak to that issue in some of the detail, but that's our objective, to make sure that the policy that's in Goal 18, the policy that's in the ADA, and the policy in your code are linked up with the administrative procedures that have to do with sand removal. I will tell you candidly that, that because we have, in the Homeowners Association, members that are experiencing access issues, and because we're aware of a neighbor that very much needs help with access because of a family member that has mobility issues, we want to be on the side of promoting public access, and we think that's the right side of the question to be on. I've also candidly explained to my client that the Americans with Disabilities Act carries with it some judicial remedies that can be onerous if you're on the wrong side of that case, we don't intend to be on the wrong side of the case, we intend to be on the side of defending public access, and to the extent that the city might have exposure, I would urge you to talk to your own counsel about that issue, because I think it's looming, and I think it's real. Historically, as you know, the accesses that have been mandated by the city from Breakers Point to the beach have been inundated with sand, and we need to deal with that, and that, that's, that's behind the amendments that we have suggested. The second is, aspect is to try to improve aspects of administering the dune standards that you have, over the past 20 years, we've learned a lot from the experience of the permitting process, and also, as Dagami has summarized in the report, an awful lot from science. We know that the introduction of non-native species to the beaches after the 1940s has changed the fundamental natural ecology there, and certainly, that change was not consistent with modern policies as they're reflected in Goal 18, which emphasizes natural ecology. We also know that protection of inland areas is not promoted by just allowing walls of sand to be created, particularly next to the mouths of a creek, instead, the protection comes from making sure the sand stays within the cell, oceanward, where it's there to absorb the impact of wave action when it comes, simply building dune walls is not the protection that some people seem to think that it is. We also have learned that requiring multiple permits over multiple years We also have learned that requiring multiple permits over multiple years spurns litigation, that we, we end up with simply a lot of trips to Luba if we have a process that isn't efficient. And so, we've suggested some amendments to address that. And we also know that over the last 20 years, about 285,000 cubic yards of additional sand has ended up in the cell in this area. And if the permitting processes are limited to about 2,500 cubic yards of sand, it's, it's going to be a long, long road to doing anything to make a dent in that, that growth. So, we ask you to join with us in recognizing that certain things are good public policy. We think that it's good public policy to recognize the impracticality of a 2,500 cubic yard standard. We think good policy to allow a longer duration of permits, more along the line of the state process, which recognizes a permit of five years. We would also ask you to take a hard look at this question of, of natural vegetation, native vegetation here. Stabilizing vegetation through the use of European dune grass has caused all sorts of problems and we are pleased to see recommendations for addressing that with some experimentation with change. We certainly would support that. So, unless you have questions about the amendments, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I leave, let me simply introduce one additional document, which is a United States Department Interior Letter, which addresses the current, establishes what we've learned to be the current policy of the federal government as well as the state of California, which is against the spread of the use of European dune grass.
State your name.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Schaefer. My address is two Center Point, sixth floor in Lake Oswego. As Tim mentioned, I work as a land use planner at his firm and we're here tonight on behalf of Breakers Point. And I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on what Tim said and what Mark identified as the fourth issue of his, which is the permitting process. As Tim mentioned, when someone does a development of a certain size, you know, your standard is access every 400 feet. Breakers Point is a pretty big project and we actually have three access points designated that we're responsible to maintain. Two of them are right on the Breakers Point property and then the third is Fifth Street at the north edge of the project. So, those are the three areas where we're focused on ensuring access for everyone. We're not talking about access to the creek here. We're talking about the accesses west, on the west edge of Breakers Point. What we're proposing in our code change is to say that once a project is approved through the usual city process, when you have driveways and sidewalks and public beach access, that all of those are allowed to be kept free of sand as part of your remedial grading classification. You guys, I'm not sure how far you've gotten into the weeds, but there's three types of grading. There's foredune grading, there's maintenance grading and there's remedial grading. Our request is that the remedial grading be allowed expressly for people to remove sand from any development that has been approved through the regular channels. A second aspect is right now, the code for remedial grading allows you to remove sand within 35 feet of a building's foundation. And the proposal on the table now is to reduce that to 20 feet. And so, our request is that you keep that at 35 feet. When the sand starts getting, you know, 20 feet close before you can go for a permit and then it takes you some number of years to get a permit, that's a little uncomfortable for us. So, we would like to keep that at 35 feet. The second issue I'd like to address is the time period for the permit. We have asked for 10-year permits for foredune grading. The state standard is a five-year permit plus potential renewals if the local jurisdiction's land use approval is still in effect. So, what we're trying to do is get one permit for a longer-term project because as several folks have mentioned, oftentimes in a larger area like Breakers Point, you don't just do the grading and go home and be done with it. Okay? There's often grading repeatedly over some number of years. So, we're asking for the permit to be good for a certain number of years. So, we avoid repetitive permits for what amounts to the same project. I would like to underline that our proposed changes are strictly procedural. No changes in the standards. The standard in Goal 18 that sets the level of the grading in relation to the FEMA base fly elevation, we're not proposing any change in that. The requirements of the city and the state for annual monitoring reports, which are done to ensure that the replanting has taken root and is doing well, we're not proposing any changes to that. So, the concept that we're asking for a big, open-ended permit without any restrictions, I think is a little, not quite so accurate because we're not changing any of the technical standards that are in effect now. We're just asking to change the time period. Thank you very much.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Bruce Francis, PO Box 246, Cannon Beach. I noticed going through this draft, pretty much on the back page, I'd like to pick up one of the corrections that, if you look on page nine, it says the cross-sectional area of the dune area as measured perpendicular to the shoreline and above the 100-year stillwater flood elevation and seawalls of the dune crest is at least 540 square feet. That needs to be updated to the current FEMA rules, which are 1,100 square feet. We entered that into the record on our 2015 permitting process. So, I know that it has been around there, you know, at least for three years. So, let's bring that up to date because I see that as an error.
Bruce?
Yes?
Could you give me the reference again?
Oh, page nine should be the very last one of the ordinance, corrections to your ordinance.
It's of the document that's labeled Cannon Beach Foredune Management Zoning Ordinance Amendments.
It's in Attachment D, which is the zoning ordinance amendments and on the last page of that, the first sentence.
And then, of course, what was brought up by the attorney is the 20 feet. Whether that's a typo or not, current law is 35, so there'd be something that we should also correct. There's mention in here of grading in the spring and summer. Dr. Allen made that proposal in his original draft. I'm now thinking that the corrections for your February draft will be changed because it makes absolutely no sense to do that. In fact, the great document that you received in, in your packet comes from LCDC. And as you know, LCDC, on their first page, says that most foredune management plans recommend that planting of dune grasses should take place November through April in order to ensure grass survival during the rainy season. And I can concur with that because we've done all of our grading and our plantings in that timeframe. So, we have a history of probably seven moves where we've got something like 97% propagation time and time again. So, the thing to do, especially for us, is to put it to that time schedule because it is the quietest time of the year for interruption to access to beaches. It's also the quietest time of the tier, of the year for beach use. It's also the most efficient time to move sand. It's also the most efficient time for propagation of grasses, whatever you're planting. So, it definitely makes sense to, to make that change. We appreciate the 13,760 cubic yard proposal that we got approved and we completed in February, March of 2016, sorry, 2017. Keep lost, took two years for us to get that approved. The thing that I want you to realize is that more than half of that has accreted back. And in the past, it's taken us a good 12 months to get approval to go again. So, you can see that we have gotten absolutely nowhere with an approval of 13,760 cubic Some of our opponents have said we did a good job on that. Well, aesthetically, it is a good job, but so far as improving the view corridor or enhancing our views, it's done nothing. We haven't established any gains whatsoever. And I think that you need to look forward to what's in your COOP Plan and Goal 18 and Dr. Allen's report that specifically says that you can grade for inundation or view enhancement. It's either or, not one predicated upon the other. It's either. You can have sand piling up against your building, your remedial grading takes care of that, or for view enhancement, which Dr. Allen put in as point four of something to be considered by this board. And this is a report that you commandeered and paid for. We all sat back for the new information. We delayed our, our grading and these recommendations have been made by your paid professionals. So, I think that that carries a lot more weight than people who say, "We don't want to see any grading done." We obviously have the right to do it. So, I think that we're feeling slightly like second-class citizens on the North Shore because all the access points south of Akola and also the sea walls, the riprap, you've got everything, south of Akola Creek. In the Chapman, the Torrel cell, we've got nothing but sand and dunes and accretion. And it's a two-way process. Not only can we not get onto the beach, it's when the tsunami alarm sounds, we've got no way to get off the beach. And for people to say, "It's wonderful to have this great big iconic barrier that we can all look at and admire and it's protecting the town," go back to your 64. Go back to the tsunami of 64. Look at what happened. The dunes did nothing to protect the town. So, what we'd like to get back to is grading to the profile of established values by FEMA, which allows 11,000 square feet above the 100-year flood. They make these rules for specific purposes for us to follow. That is what has been determined by FEMA's experts to stop wave overtopping. And on top of that, Dr. Allen recommends that the foredune be graded so as it comes down to the six-meter or 19-foot elevation of the toe to allow run-up and dispersal of energy in the effect of a tsunami. So, all these factors get back to the fact that we should be allowed to remove much more sand than what is being granted at this time, if only we adhere to the existing rules and regulations that the professionals and state and federal agencies have put upon us. We are abiding by their rules. All we need is for you to approve a process to allow us to grade to what the established rules are. So, that's what we're asking for. I thank you for your time. Are there any questions? I thank you.
Are we finished with testimony?
Good evening. My name is Frank Patrick. I live at 255 Northwest Torrevue, Portland, Oregon. And I'm here to talk about, I guess, proponing to support what you've just heard is to be an amendment or what we believe should be considered as proposed amendments to the plan as it now exists. I think the most important thing that needs to be addressed is the need that Goal 18 focuses on for access, public access to all the public beaches. And I think that it's, what has happened is somehow or another, it's been twisted or has, has been lost that the real goal is compliance with Goal 18. Goal 18 was, whatever you're going to call it, the Open Beaches Act, you can say the Free Access Act, but the reality of it is, when Breakers Point was granted a conditional use permit to build out there 70 units, it required that it maintain the four units of the four access points. And you've heard about, we've talked about three or four, whatever, however you count them, if you start one to the far left and one at the end of Sacagawea. And I think by the time you're done, you have four or maybe five points, if you call Sacagawea part of our access point. But the reality of it is this, at the time it was built, there really wasn't anything else out there. Today, we've got a city that's thriving, is growing, you've got parking problems downtown and you've got access points all up and down from Tolavanna all the way to what I'm going to call as Whale Park. I think I counted them once as 14 or 15 access that, that the city maintains. And the reason for that is because if you don't have access, what have you got for the beach? You come to the beach to play in the water, to play in the sand and to have fun on the beach. I want to point out to you that you don't have a problem of, of losing the dunes in Cannon Beach. You've got a problem of losing the beaches. And if you want to have a good opportunity to take a look at it after this most current storm, you can go down to Sacagawea, walk down to the, to the edge, and I mean the edge, okay? And if you can step off, you've got a lot longer in the seam than I do because it's about a six-foot drop now. Now, the reason for that is because you've got a huge buildup of sand. That prevents access to the beach. What, what Mr. Francis was referring to, if you're on the other side of that, if you're on the beach side of that, you can't get back up. If you're a small child, you're finished. You're going, you're going to sit there until mom and dad or grandpa comes looking for you. If they can get down, because it's not an easy task. In fact, I would challenge any one of you to go down and hike with any one of my kids, who are a lot better shaped than I am, to see if you can get down and back up in a reasonable amount of time. But the reason for that is because the grade of the beach is no longer a natural grade. It has been changed by the intervention of, of us humans who said, "We've got a better idea than what the sand, winds and the waters all have worked." For, I think somebody pointed out to me a couple thousand years. I don't know. I wasn't here a couple thousand years ago, but that's, this person indicated to me that probably they were going to continue to do nice things with the beaches in a natural way. When man intervenes, it changes the forces of nature. If you put a highway down, it's going to change things. If you put beach grass down, it's going to change things. And the one letter that I think Mr. Ramis put in is the change from the Interior Department of what they say about European beach grass. There's no question about it. It has done the job that it was intended to do. It has stabilized the beaches, no. It has stabilized the creation and accretion of more and more sand. So, now we have a wonderful set of dunes and a diminishing set of beaches. These beaches are considered to be some of the most beautiful beaches in the world, apparently by the recent article that somebody handed me. And they are, and they're fantastic to play on and have fun on. So, I'm here to tell you, let's make sure that people can get to the beaches. The first thing is to make sure that there's access. The second thing is, why did we have the required 400-foot access? It was to avoid the very problem that I'm talking about. Don't have wonderful beaches and then have a whole portion of the beaches, almost, I would say, almost a third, let's say at least 25%. say, almost a third, let's say at least twenty-five percent of the beach, is north of Ecola Creek. That beach is virtually vacant all the time because you can't get to it. So the people are down here, they're crowding, they're creating parking problems in downtown Portland, downtown Cannon Beach, which everybody Cannon Beach wishes there was fewer parking problems. In fact, I think I've sat here in this room and listened to people complain about parking. Now, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm almost certain that that's because they can't go north, but at least some of the people would love to go north of Ecola Park and be able to get to the beach, but they can't. So from my standpoint, let's think about access. And when you think about access, think about the normal wave activity. If you have a nice, gentle sloping beach, the way you have down on the main part here, you don't have this wave overtopping that we're talking about. I want to make sure everybody understands, overtopping means going over the sand dune, going over the issue, and coming up into the area of the beach that you don't want the waves to come to. Overtopping isn't a problem if you have a nice, narrow, nice sloped beach because the wave dissipates. As it hits the beach, it elongates both north and south. Right now, what's happening is the waves are hitting, and if you haven't been down to Ecola Park and seen what's happened at the end of Larch Street, the city has lost another eight feet of its street, at Larch Street. It's gone. It's been gone the last week or so. In the last ten years, there's been roughly fifty feet that used to come south of Larch Feet that is now gone. And the reason for that is that Ecola Creek is being forced to constantly erode into the north side of its bank. Everybody's concerned about, if we take the beech grass away, if we reduce the dunes, all of a sudden, we're going to have these homes exposed to more problems. FEMA has established these rules. This body has just recently been taking a look at, or I should say, City Council, at voting to have the FEMA insurance rates put back in. It'll save the people in Cannon Beach over a million dollars a year. But the real point is, is that the FEMA rules really do establish this gradual grading that's necessary to allow waves to dissipate instead of being funneled up to an area like Ecola Park. Now, I don't know what the environment all is about that. I wish I were a little smarter in that area, but I can't believe that the estuary is benefited by having wave activity run in there. We spent a lot of money to put some burritos on the edge, that north edge of Ecola Creek, and they were completely washed away. I don't think it was more than twelve, fifteen, sixteen, maybe twenty thousand dollars, not to worry about, right? But it does worry about it because what's happening is you're losing the beach. You now no longer can get down to the beach north of Ecola through the park there, off of Larch Street. You can't walk there, there's no place, no place to walk. And it's a sharp cliff now, about a six-foot cliff. I'm a pretty good-sized guy, and even I was surprised at how steep it was. Nothing about my grandkids, they couldn't get up and down from there. So my point to you is, let's take a look at, how do you have a gradual dissipation? That's what really we're asking you folks to look at, is use the rules that are already in place. Millions, maybe hundreds of millions of dollars have been spent by FEMA to figure out how to preserve the coastlines and how to protect people like the citizens of Cannon Beach. And we say, enact, implement what they've already established. And those goals and the method that they're doing it, I think you will find, if you make a few changes to this process, you're going to find a better opportunity for the beaches to be maintained and have excellent access. I think the best thing that I can say is that beach access is not my acts, it's my duty, and it's my obligation. And when I talk to the Tools with their boy who would like to go down to the beach, I have to tell you, it's tragic that they have to go all the way down to Tolavanna, they live right on the beach, they're right at the edge of the Breakers Point property, but they can't get in to the beach because the grade is too steep.
You've made your point.
Okay. All right, all I can say to you is this, I hope that you'll consider what we said. We're all for making sure that you have good access, and that's what we're all about. Thank you very much. Any questions at all? Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Okay. Yes? Okay.
I'm Jan Seibert-Warmond, P.O., Box 778, Cannon Beach. Dear Cannon Beach Planning Commissioners, I ask each of you tonight to take the time to consider our dunes, our beaches, as sacred lands. The indigenous people who lived here before us for thousands of years recognized them as such, and the indigenous people who live today continue to do so. Our fast-paced culture doesn't seem to feel comfortable talking about the dunes, the beaches, as something sacred. Some, however, do realize how much we need a healthy, natural world in order to live fully, safely, and harmoniously. The dunes, the beaches are vibrant ecosystems that deserve our respect, and as a way of showing that respect, we need to protect them from well-meaning mismanagement. We live here and we love it here largely because of the natural beauty. Our town's tourism is primarily beauty-based. The dunes, the beaches have inherent value. They are more complex than we can ever imagine. We make a grave mistake, thinking they are only bits of sand to be moved and manipulated according to our will. There are innumerable creatures living in our dunes, our beaches, with diverse habitat needs. We live here in relationship with all of them. It is up to us, as a sustainably focused community, to look out for them. We are all integral parts of an intimate tapestry. With these thoughts in mind, I ask you tonight to consider recommending no human sand dune management at this time, but to accept the present dune cycles as they are and allow them to balance themselves over the coming years. In respect to Bruce Francis's saying tonight that Dr. Allen's report gave the go-ahead to dune grading, I beg to differ. The most important statement for me that Dr. Allen made at his city presentation was that we, as a community, need to answer the question, do we, as a community, really want or not want dune grading? We didn't have dune grading until nineteen ninety-eight. Please continue this hearing as Mark Barnes asked, and I wasn't sure if he was meaning also oral and written, but I would ask for you to continue the hearing for both of those. There is a lot of technical information for everyone to digest, and also, there is no clock ticking on this matter. Thank you.
Does anybody else like to speak?
Scott Schneider, P.O., Box 755, Cannon Beach. In my professional career, I worked on sustainability for twenty-five years. And, you know, I hear people talk about the iconic dunes, the dunes as they are now formulated are sacred. You know, it really disturbs me to think that what we created, what man has wrought, can't be fixed or remediated. Governmental units around the world work really hard to undo the damage we've done. We tear out dams. We try to fix rivers that we've damaged by changing the flows. We try to get rid of invasive species. We try to put it back the way it was when man first got there, so those natural systems can operate the way they once were. What did we do? On Cannon Beach, we planted European beech grass. It has become an unnatural invasive species. That has caused the problem. What we're proposing to see here in this plan is to try to put it back, try to fix what man has wrought. It's a very simple proposal, it's a very simple thought. Granted, it's more complex than that, that you have to go ahead and think through all the issues, but at least the first step would be use natural vegetation and try to get back to the slopes and grades that were there when we first came to them, before we changed them, before we impacted them with our activities. Thank you.
Does anybody else like to speak? Okay, in that case, foredune management plan amendment will be continued for the February twenty-second meeting. Yes, February twenty-second meeting will go open for oral and written.
You gonna call a break here? You gonna call a break here?
Sure. We'll take a short break.
Pass the letter.
Will be able to test by next time?
Yes.
Do you have a record?
Record? Do you want to put something in now?
No, I didn't, but I was here. I shouldn't have the right.
Yeah, you absolutely will, but the hearing is going to be completely open both oral and written from the February twenty-second.
Okay, one else.
You guys have had a notice.
Well, I'm just standing there commenting.
Okay, well, we can do the, not quite natural.
Okay.
Four-three-six, eight-zero-four-zero. We'll be working tomorrow, but I will be here.
Okay, I'll do the call event, we'll work it out.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thanks.
Doors open a little too long. Yeah. I drove through this afternoon, and there was no snow on the side, I was worried that there might be, so, you know. No one's supposed to see that.
Okay, folks, we need to get on with the program. That's it? Okay, folks, we're going to get started with the next agenda item. Okay, we're going to get started with the next agenda item. This is a legislative public hearing regarding consideration of ZO eighteen dash O two workforce housing amendments. City of Cannon Beach requests for zoning ordinance and text amendments regarding the workforce housing. The proposed amendment includes zoning ordinance text amendments regarding multiple-family housing. The request will be reviewed against the criteria of the municipal code, section seventeen dot eight-six dot oh-seven-oh-a amendment criteria. Does anyone object to jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commissioner member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Staff report?
Thank you. This is a public hearing on an item you held a work session on in November. The amendments were mostly in front of you at those work sessions, so the amendments here should not be much of a surprise. There were a couple of minor tweaks based on what you said and just sort of to flesh out some things that would've been a little bit vague on. There's also a copy of the city's affordable housing task force report, which is, kind of spawns these types of amendments. There's some additional supporting material that Remar Bartle has
Cannon Beach reside there.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, the eight fifty to twelve hundred dollar range is not bad for retirement housing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's rent.
Well, you know, again, I don't think we can probably distinguish between.
That's what I'm about to.
Yeah.
Yeah, fair housing.
Yeah, there's, there's rules against that.
I'm, I'm, oh, I'm concerned about, still concerned about the parking because I don't, you know, that your experience that you shared at the last meeting about Elk Creek, that survey you did is completely the opposite of my experience going up there and trying to park in the evenings when people were home, were home and using all the parking spots. And then I see that there's, there were two who pays for parking, you know, there's a, there's an example of Seattle, there's an example of San Diego, and that's like apples and oranges because living in a place like Cannon Beach, you need a car to go to the drugstore, you know, up in Seaside, Rite Aid, the buses, there's no public transportation here except for that one bus that runs, and that isn't, that's difficult for people. And so I'm just, I just have no, I, there's a big, like, if there was a parking comparison with another small town that didn't have all the things that people might need and they might have to go to another small town to get them, that would make more sense. But San Diego and Seattle have incredible public transportation systems, so you can get along there without a car.
Well, I'm not here to be argumentative. These are, these are judgments that you have to make. I stand by the, the survey that was done this summer at our two major apartment complexes. What I, what I would observe, and it is in the testimony I provided to you, is, you know, it, the, the number is about forty percent more parking than is, that we require than was actually there. That's very consistent with the search of the literature. If you look at the literature, people will look at the issue of, of housing, parking requirements, they all come in at this thirty to forty percent range of too much off-street parking required. So I stand by that. I, I would have brought you some studies from small towns. The reality is, small towns generally don't have the resources to do this kind of thing, so we end up looking at bigger city, but, and there's no doubt, yes, of course, Seattle and San Diego have, you know, extensive public transportation systems. But I would submit to you that, you know, there are significant people that, that get by without a car. And Cannon Beach has got some advantages in that it is a very small community. It's possible to work, to walk to work. Most of our employment opportunities are located in very concentrated areas and aren't very far from our multifamily housing zones. So I think there's some real mitigating factors. So that's, that's what I would say, leave it up to you to make your judgment, if that makes sense, but that's what the literature indicated to me.
So I was trying to figure out this, these two plans. You have up here this thirty-two foot high.
Mm-hmm.
Would that be three floors?
That would be three stories, right. And the, the reason, the reason I provided you an example was, and I, I picked this one particularly, this, this, of course, is the Tolavanah Community Site, which was one of the sites that the city's housing study looked at as a potential area to build some workforce housing. And actually, in that study, the consultants had retained an architect and they had prepared a plan, just a schematic plan, that showed some housing on the area where the Cannon Beach Academy is now. And that was within the existing building height. And that's, that's one of the, one of the sketches which shows the two stories and then the eight units. And I just had this sketch prepared to show you that by going to thirty-two feet, you could add eight more units. Now, this is just illustrative. Who knows what would actually come out? But this is just illustrative that a modest increase in the building height, just for people that are willing to take these constraints, can lead to substantially more units. And that, the key to making this kind of housing work is, you've got to get as many units in as you can to make the costs pencil out. The one other thing I would observe about this, we got into kind of a little bit of a fraught conversation at, at one of your work sessions, but I think that particularly the R-three zone, and certainly this particular location, is very amenable to a slightly higher building height because it's located between US Highway 101 and Hemlock Street. And all, and some of the larger parcels are through parcels between Hemlock and US 101, such as the Cannon Beach community, you know, the Tolavanah Community Club Site. So through site design, for example, having the buildings back towards Highway 101, it really has the effect of mitigating the, the effect of the building height as perceived from Hemlock and so on. So that's another reason I, I just threw the, this in as example, not only that it was an example in your own housing study of about a potential site, but also to pick a site where I think just through your design review process, things can be done to, to address people's concerns about a slightly higher building height.
But you could accomplish the same thing with twenty-eight feet.
I, you, you, potentially, you would have half the units. Quite frankly, when I saw the city's proposal to build eight units there, I thought, no way can they make this happen economically without a huge city subsidy. There's, there's sort of economies of scale in building housing projects. Eight units is way below any kind of economy of scale.
I'm thinking of stories, and you could actually have the required height be seven feet and make it to twenty-eight feet.
Would you want any of your clients to live in a, in a, in a unit with seven-foot ceiling heights? I don't think so.
If what's required.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay. Anybody else, our proponents for?
Oh, I, I did want to mention one other thing. I think that Patrick Nofield with Escape Lodging sent the city a letter.
He did.
And so I, I, I think it's in your packets, but, but Mark didn't mention it, so I just wanted to make sure where that. Thanks again.
All right. Okay, anybody else like to speak as a proponent?
I'm Dave Norstedt, P.O. Box 701, Cannon Beach. You have the letter of support that I submitted for this, these amendments. I was on the Affordable Task, Affordable Housing Task Force, and for about a year, we went through a number of different proposals and ideas of things that we could do to somehow make housing affordable here in Cannon Beach. Yeah, I, I believe it's probably the biggest issue, one of the biggest issues we face as it's tied to employee availability and, and that type of thing, certainly in our industry. And as I, we did come up with a, you know, a handful of ideas and mostly, you know, identified some areas where perhaps some multifamily or affordable housing could work. But as I sat and listened to a lot of that, the thing, the thing that stayed with me was, what is there to entice a developer, a builder, an owner to do a project like this? In my career, I've opened a number of hotels and restaurants, worked with lots of developers and contractors, and so I, I think I have a fairly strong understanding of that industry. And you do need to do something to make, to entice somebody to want to do that. There has to be some level of profitability unless you are able to come up with some kind of city, county, state subsidies. And in my understanding during that process, that, that's very unlikely that anything like that would ever happen. Some of you probably remember, it's probably only been about six months, you gave me a conditional use permit to build some affordable housing right across the street. And we are not doing that project, at least anytime in the near future. As we put the project out to bid, it became pretty obvious, pretty fast, that the cost of that was just undoable for us. I think we had looked at that project a couple of years ago, I think in fifteen, and we saw about roughly with the same design, about a thirty percent increase in cost of construction there. And so in particular, the two things that I think make these amendments attractive to us potentially in a, in a future project, whether it's that one or, or another, or to anyone else, are the change in height restriction to potentially allow that third story, and also the, the parking restrictions and lessening those, I think roughly by about a third, I guess, as I understand it. So in our design, it was a two-story building because that's all we could get in, in that, on that site. The bottom floor was all garages, and that was to accommodate the parking requirements. And were, were we able to add, you know, a second story or a third story of units, it would have, you know, potentially made, because there, there are some economies of scale even in a smaller project like that. You're, you're really only building one building envelope and, you know, you, you still have the cost of the kitchens and the bathrooms and all of those things. But, so I, I think these proposals may, perhaps would have changed that for us. And I, I know there's a huge concern about parking in Cannon Beach. This project for us, the, the main source of employees that we were planning on housing there is the J-1 visa program. And these are students that typically come from abroad. They clean our rooms in the summertime. It's a program that we've used for several years, and none of them have cars. And so for that particular project, the parking requirements were pretty egregious for the cost of that project, so. Anyway, I, anyone have any questions for me? But I fully support these amendments and hope that you would consider them, so.
Thank you for coming back and telling us why you did not build it, because I had asked Mark, and I think all of us were quite interested in what made you change your mind.
It truly was the cost of construction, so.
And you feel that if it had the other four feet, you would have been able to make a third story, is that correct?
Potentially. I, I, I think, you know, I, there's obviously, David can probably speak to that a little bit more than I can, but, you know, I think there are definitely some ways to design, even with an extra four feet, that third story into the attic space. And honestly, during our design period, it wasn't even something that we considered trying to do at that, at that site, so.
Could you explain, I, I didn't understand what you said about the visa program and not having cars.
So these are, these are foreign students, Taiwan, China, Thailand, Jamaica, and they all fly here. We pick them up. We provide some level of transportation for some of their basic needs as much as we can, but they do at some level re, rely on public transportation to go buy their groceries and those kind of things. And although, I guess, in the past, I've had a couple that have stayed beyond the, just the summer months and were able to extend their visas, and I, I remember one or two of them actually purchased a vehicle while they were here, but that, that was an extreme example. So I think that ninety-five percent of them do not have vehicles when they're here.
And these were the people you were trying to build visas?
No, these are, I'm sorry, the, these are, these are students that we bring into workforce in the summer because there, there aren't enough, there are way more jobs available than there are employees in this market. I mean, I think you'll, you see, even in the fall now, after the season, there are hundreds of available jobs in the historian or if you look with the Employment Department. And so, and, you know, another big box store opening before summer in Warrenton right now, so probably another hundred employees out of this market. So this is a program that we have kind of used off and on during the downturn, starting in oh-eight, oh-nine, we didn't need to because there was an excess of available really great employees for about three or four years. And then starting in, I think, two thousand twelve or thirteen, we had to start using this program again. So, and it, it's critical that you provide the housing for that program, so.
Why is it that all of a sudden people weren't applying for jobs?
Uh, they found jobs other places or, you know, I, I'm not really sure why, I guess they just, you know, they were laid off from jobs in Portland or whatever. Not so much, I don't think. I think they just, we just found it much easier to find people. And now it's getting just more and more difficult. And, I mean, it's to the point where, you know, we, we actually consider shuttering some of our rooms in our busiest time if we can't find people to clean them, so. But, and, and I do think this, it, it isn't the, the only solution for this problem, but I think it's certainly one that could help. There are no guarantees to, even with these amendments, that someone's going to come in and build housing and charge an affordable rent for, you know, somebody that, to live here. But it potentially could help. In our situation, since we're, we're doing it only to house our employees, it, it would make total sense for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that'd like to speak?
I also, I just have a question. Can I just ask a question of Redmar? Do you have to come up? I'll come up and ask it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll come up and ask it. I just have a question.
Elena Jagir, P.O. Box 474. Redmar?
I think you should direct it to the chair.
Direct it there, okay. Well, my question is, I, I think these projects are lovely and well-needed for our community. My question would be, does anyone think that any of those projects would be suitable for a family? Not just a single person or a couple? Might any of those units have three bedrooms in case it's a couple and they have two children? The goal is also to, I would like to see more families be able to afford to live here and raise their children, go to our schools, become our firemen, you know, work in our hotels, grow up here. So if these projects can be done, if there are developers who will do them, it would be lovely if they were not all just studios and one bedrooms, if they could, you know, incorporate some families. We need families. We're all getting old here, you know? We need some young blood here. And if they can afford to live here, they will work here. They will clean the rooms, they will serve the dinners, they will grow their children here, and they'll come back, and they'll be our firemen, and they'll grow up and be our police officers. But we have to help them by giving them a place to live. And they, some of them need three bedrooms.
Yeah, I mean, that's been on my mind all along, is that if we want to encourage families with children, these units are not addressing that.
Well, we don't know that, so my, that's not my question. I mean, potentially, they could.
Well, the issue, the issue with the, the, the building that Clark is putting in, those were studios.
Right, but that's, that's one small, so that's a, that's a great.
Well, I'm just saying, that's what's come before us.
Right, but maybe with a, a little extra height, you, you can. And a building like that, first off, I would hate to see the, the school go away, but at some point in time, you know, a few more feet on, in that location is going to have zero impact on anyone else. I won't hurt a view. It won't do any of those things that we are so concerned about here. Quite frankly, it'll probably block a lot of noise from Highway 101. So if they're done in places that, you know, there's, they don't impact someone behind them or next to them type thing, I don't think that you would get much pushback from that. Because most of those zones, there's, you know, it's not like they're going to put a thirty-two-foot building up in front of, in front of your house. And so it, it really, you know, sometimes a little sacrifice for the greater good, whatever. But it would just be nice if some of them could house a family.
So Mark, do you have anything that you want to add to that?
That, that issue was addressed by the Affordable Housing Task Force, you know, finding the right mix of, let's just call them three-bedroom units versus ones, two studios, and that's, that's a, kind of an art, is figuring out exactly what that correct mix is. Our consultant talked about different areas where they kind of tweak those numbers one way or the other to, in response to market concerns. You're right, the project you looked at, the parking variance on, was, was not a, a unit that had a development that's going to have multiple bedrooms that would suit a large.
And so that's probably why that was great, you know? So I, I just think that, you know, in moving forward as we think of these, we want to think of families, too. Not just, you know, a single person or two roommates or a couple. We need to bring some families here. We need to find a way to grow our, our community because we're all getting old and we're going to die, and we need some young blood here, so.
I think I do have one little thing if you want to do it.
Okay. Are you finished?
Oh, yeah, I'm done. I didn't really have to come up.
So the only thing I, you know, really can bring to it is, again, we're not, we're just talking about your zoning code. We're just talking about the parameters in which somebody has to develop a project. But there are, you know, I just draw your attention to a couple of things. So for example, one of the proposals is to reduce the off-street parking for a three-bedroom to one point two five cars per unit. So that could have a significant impact on somebody thinking about building a three-bedroom unit. The other thing is, there'd be a small adjustment in allowing what's called stacked parking. So generally, we don't allow cars to stack one behind the other because in most situations, that's not going to work. But in these proposed changes for a three-bedroom, you could stack your cars because potentially, you know, they would be for the same unit. So again, you know, we're just talking about the zoning code and setting the parameters. I, I think, you know, the, the, the project that Mike Clark brought to you previously, that was a unique project. I would point out, it was a rebuild on a fair, on a small site. So just having studios and one bedrooms is really about the only thing that was going to work there. I don't think that necessarily means when, if somebody looks at a project with a bigger site, that they wouldn't look at a different mix. So that's what I can add in terms of that question.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
No.
Okay.
Jan Seibert-Worman, P.O. Box 778, Cannon Beach. Dear Planning Commissioners, I have been told that I should, of all people, understand the need for affordable housing, being one of the lowest-income people living in Cannon Beach for thirty years now. I do understand the need, and I'd like to say that even though I'm a low-income person, I still would like to see our community find a solution, or several, to affordable housing that doesn't significantly impact Cannon Beach so that it becomes even more overbuilt than I think it already is. I'm very concerned about taking more and more water out of Ecola Creek in the summer months to serve the hotels, the businesses, the visitors, and the residents. I suggest that rather than opening all of the R-three zones to affordable or workforce housing, we continue to look at each proposal individually on its own merits, as was done recently for the apartments to be built by Mike Clark on North Large Street. I'm also concerned that when we do approve a certain proposal, we have a legal certainty that the development will remain affordable or workforce in perpetuity. We've seen numerous times, even thinking about the dune grading in our community where it's said that this deed restriction will be in perpetuity, and now we've heard proposals from the people at the Chapman Point Beach that they would like to change that deed restriction. So how can we make sure when we build something affordable or workforce, that it really is in perpetuity? I wonder, is that possible? I'd like that question to be answered before this decision is made. I do potentially support the tiny homes proposal at the Cannon Beach RV Park area and would like to see us try those first before any more changes occur. Let's see how they develop and then go from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to respond? Okay. In that case, workforce housing amendment will be continued to the February 22nd meeting.
With notification to all people in the R-three zone?
Correct.
This is Legislative Public Hearing Regarding Consideration of Z-018-03 Tree Removal Amendment. City of Cannon Beach requests for zoning ordinance text amendment to Chapter 17 dot seventy tree removal. The proposed amendment addresses the protection of trees from unintended damage during construction. The request will be reviewed against the criteria of the municipal code, Section 17 dot eight six dot oh seven oh, A Amendment Criteria. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any member believe she or he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commissioner or member believe he or she has a personal bias? Okay, staff report?
This is in response to a, a work session that you held on, on tree removal ordinance, and it addresses two things. The first was easy. Joe Baldwin made some comments to you about this, this professional responsibility as an arborist, and one of those said, you know, we're, we're in the tree protection business for the most part. Although from regulatory side, it doesn't play out that way, but it does give you some kind of insightful background into what those professionals are doing when they're working on permits in the city. So in response to that commentary and that, kind of that line of thinking, one of the things I'm recommending is that you change the title of Chapter 1770 from Tree Removal to Tree Removal in the City. to Tree Removal and Protection. Um, and then, I guess, more substantively, it's the second part of this, um, there was a discussion, actually, more than one discussion, about what happens, uh, during, uh, construction of a residence that's been approved, and that inadvertently damages other trees, either on that property or off the property. And typically, it happens in one of two ways. They're excavating a foundation trench, um, for a footing or something like that, and, um, I get a call and say, "Look, we've just cut through this giant root of this tree. It's not even on our property. It's 10 feet away," or something like that. Um, what do we do? Because clearly, they've damaged this tree inadvertently to the point where it's probably, poses at least a risk. Um, usually, what we do is try to kind of shoehorn in this after-the-fact evaluation. So what I've tried to do is, um, put together some requirements that when we do site plan review, um, for a, let's say it's a residence, that we require, we now require that they identify all the trees within the footprint that are going to be taken. Those are kind of a gimme. If your tree was in, is going to be in your master bedroom, that gets to go. And we usually issue those permits, the tree removal permits, for those trees within the footprint. At the same time, we issue the building permit. That's fairly straightforward. Doesn't really, uh, cause too much consternation at either end, either the homeowner, builder end, or at our end. Um, but what about the trees that are outside the footprint, that our ordinance doesn't now require that they identify? Um, and so what I've done is put in a process here that, um, we require that they identify those trees and, and make, um, have an arborist make mitigation recommendations on how to protect those trees during construction. Now, I guess, two things you should know. One is, I doubt that this is going to mitigate all instances where this happens. I just, I'm not sure that's even possible. Maybe it's possible that I'm not clever enough to figure out all the ways that it might happen. I think this gets at the most common problem, but it, it may not get at all of the problems. So, and then, number two, is I couldn't find another city that had something just like this, so I really had to kind of cobble together this process myself. So, if you do go down this road and adopt this amendment, I guess what I'd suggest is, um, we try it out for a year and see how it works, both from our point of view of administering these permits, and then from a results point of view, see if we've avoided any of this, uh, damage to trees off-site or outside the footprint. Um, and, uh, and be open to the possibility, we may need to tweak that, or get rid of it, or wholesale change it, something after a year of trying this out. But, um, I think that, the intent there is to get at that issue, inadvertent damage to trees outside of the footprint, either on that property or off the property. So, that's what I'm trying to get, do, if, there may be somebody here to testify on that. I didn't get any correspondence on this, or any feedback from anybody, so, um, we're kind of in an, an early sta, stage of this. Uh, when Joe Baldwin spoke with you, that the work session didn't offer particular kind of examples or a prescription of how this might work. Um, I think he had a goal in mind, as I do, too, but, um, kind of feeling my way forward on how this might work, uh, from a point of view of somebody who's going to have to administer those permits.
Well, I, but, I, I think you should address that with the houses being built on the S-curve.
Uh-huh.
Um, you know, there was a tree up on the upper bank that was, you know, cut out of the way, and then later, there was a tree, I'm not sure if it was on, uh, the building property, if it was the adjacent building that's halfway down the, the slope, that got cut down.
Yeah, that's an example of what I'm talking about, is that, those were outside the footprint, but the construction ended up damaging those roots.
But was that house on the building property, or was it on the adjacent property?
I can't remember now.
Okay.
It's, it's exact, that's a good example of that situation, where, when, uh, that plan came in, they'd identified the, the trees within the footprint, as they're required to do, and we dealt with those, but it didn't address the issue of, uh, damage to roots from adjoining trees. That's what we're trying to get at, exactly that situation.
Yeah.
I think it came up on, uh, the Nicholson Project, on the retaining wall. When they built the retaining wall, they ended up damaging, uh, some, when they had to excavate a footing for it, and it damaged a tree that was a distance off, they didn't think it was going to be, um, affected by it, but, I mean, when out there, they clearly cut through a, a large root as they built that trench for that retaining wall. But...
Well, and I would recommend that you continue to watch the tree at the entrance, because there's been a lot of work done around it, and I'm concerned about what that might do to it.
Yeah, one of the conditions was, um, involved arborists, um, checking up in that, on that tree once the, the initial flurry of construction was over, so, yeah, that's...
It's the utility work.
Yeah, and that, that, those utilities are in now. There's likely to be more construction for the houses, but as far as those, the, the large tree near the entrance, that's probably suffered the, the worst of its problems at this point, so they, uh, they are supposed to go in and, um, look at that and see if there's something they need to do.
How do you make them do it?
It's a condition of approval, they, they have to do it. Um, I've, I've been in discussions with them about that. They, they know they have to do it, so...
They're supposed to be looking at the wall, too, and they don't have that.
They know they need that, too, so...
Can I ask a question? On page four, um, item five, you're taking out including trees, and I was just wondering why?
Page four, item five?
Five.
Yeah, I'm adding it down below. I'm doing, just from removing it from five and fleshing it out in a much greater extent in number six, which would be middle.
Okay, um, so was there any other, uh, correspondence on this?
No, there was not.
The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff report and listed on the criteria sheet on, next to the west door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria. Other criteria in comprehensive plan or municipal code which a person testifies, believes, to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by a statement and evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and parties an opportunity to respond is to the issue precludes the appeal based on that issue. Persons who testify should receive recognition from the chairman, state their name and mailing address, and if they are being represented from another party, they should identify that representative. Um, okay, are there any, um, presentations, proponents for the tree removal amendment?
Jan Seibert-Worman, I'm with the Cannon Beach Friends of the Trees, and my P.O. Box is 778 Cannon Beach. Dear Planning Commissioners, my first reading of the proposed tree removal amendments tells me that the changes would be helpful. I would feel more comfortable, however, if before you vote, to recommend these to the city council, that Joe Baldwin, our trusted consultant on many tree issues in Cannon Beach, would be able to look through these amendments and give his written approval or suggestions, as he has done for our community in the past. I think Joe Baldwin will be willing to do this, and if you could consider keeping the hearing open, not to oral testimony, but open to written comments, it would be helpful to this situation. Thank you for your consideration.
Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, then we will close the public hearing portion and move to consideration. Any further discussion?
I'll read. What about Jan's request?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure, um, in the past, you, I mean, on the last meeting, you, you didn't specifically ask for continuation. Are you asking for consideration to continue this?
Just for reading parts of it, Joe could wait.
I didn't hear that.
You didn't hear him just read that?
No, no, no. She said, she just, just the written testimony, so, Joe could wait if she said.
Okay, but, but you're asking for formal continuation to get that information from...
Joe.
From Joe.
Just until, it doesn't have to, I know he's not going to be around at the next, in February for your meeting, so if you, if, if someone somehow maybe wanted to get the written information to him, and he could get it back, then you could decide at the next meeting, if, if you think it will help.
Yeah, the way I, I, I think this is pretty well thought out.
I really agree.
As it is.
No.
I, I mean, I really like the changes, and if they don't work, as Mark said, we can always tweak them, or, you know, if they're not effective as we'd like them to be, I mean, I'd like to see, I'd like to see someone else do it, or somebody object to it.
Well, Mark, you want to get in touch with, uh, Joe?
Yeah, I, I just like, what I'd suggest, a couple things. If you're inclined to push your decision off to February, then what I would suggest is, let me just send out an email to all the arborists we work with, and say you're seeking a written comment on these for your February meeting. Give them all a chance to respond by email, and then I can get that to you to make a decision. You close the oral part of the hearing, that should go fairly quickly. The other thing is, if you're more inclined to take action tonight, um, Joe and those other arborists and everybody would have a second bite at the apple at the city council anyway.
Right, I, I...
So, either way...
I mean, I'd like to take that.
Yeah, okay, go for it.
Well, the first thing I'd like to say is, I would, I really like the, the change in the title, Tree Removal and Protection. I even think it'd be cooler if it was Tree Protection and Removal. It's a little more positive, and, and, you know, puts the good stuff first, you know? And, and I, I would, I move that we adopt these changes in the new ordinance, and, um, move on from there to the next.
For a review, with a review process at the end of the year, or no?
Do we have to have that in the motion? You couldn't, you schedule that.
Can't, can't the city council, I mean, can't the planning commissioner...
You should, you should make that part of your motion, because the, the city council's looking for you for a recommendation, so yes, I would include it.
When they review, uh, review in a year, see if the ordinance is effective. Wait a second.
Okay. Is there, it's, it, what we're suggesting here is that we're expecting problems, but we're, we're going to vote for them anyway.
No, not expecting problems. Expect, we just don't know, there's, you know...
Well, we can always cha, I mean, we can always, you know, address problems that arise, if they arise.
That's true, but this whole idea about the, the trees on the adjacent property and hurting trees, that, this may not be effective enough. This, we may need a stricter ordinance to address that. This may not do it. We want to see, over the year, because that's a specific thing that's happening law. We want to, we want to really keep our eye on it, and by putting a review process in in a year, we're, we're, it's like, you know, giving ourselves a reminder, that this has to be done, and we have to look at it.
Yeah, this is a little different than a lot of the code amendments you do, because this involves a part of the program that you almost never see. You, you hear appeals from tree, um, removal permits, but those are rare. Um, in the five years I've been here, I think I've been two. So, it, it does make sense to ask for this report, because this is entirely a program that's administered administratively, and, and doesn't have effects that are obvious to you in the, your, the normal course of your business. So, to me, it does, it is a little different than, for instance, changing the building height. Um, that's, that's something, well, you don't see, but the DRB sees, for instance.
Right.
So, you, you don't really have an opportunity to evaluate its effectiveness yourselves directly. You really have to rely on staff to give you a report after 12 months, for instance.
Right, see how it works out.
All right, is there a second?
Yeah, you have one.
Oh, you did second, okay. No further discussion? We'll call?
I apologize if it got buried.
What's that?
It got buried. Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ridley?
Yes.
Commissioner Burr?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Okay. Um... Tree report?
It's attached to the end of the packet. This is a kind of a routine dead-of-winter tree report. There's a landscape table there that has the, sort of, our permit history. You should start seeing, there, there hasn't been any tree planting activity, because that's just not what the Public Works Department's doing right now. That all happens, uh, later in the winter. So you, you should start seeing more of these.
Arbor Day, Fern Day.
Yes, you can see some on Arbor Day.
What's the Mike Morgan vacant lot, five trees question?
He has had a, um, this is the only permit that I'm aware of, that was issued under the solar power provision, and he has, um, uh, he's had a permit in the past and didn't act on it, so he came in to revive that as those trees got taller. And, um, I actually haven't checked to see if he actually followed through on it this time. But it's a permit that we've issued to him previously, and then he, for whatever reason, changed his mind and didn't take him down. So they're on a piece of property he owns, adjacent to his house, um, and those trees are shading some solar panels that he has.
Oh.
And, and we have a provision that allows that.
Rather than saying vacant lot, why not, why not have the reason?
Sorry?
Why not actually, you know, note, as opposed to hazardous, uh, instead of vacant lot, um, access for solar power?
Yeah, that would have been, yes, I agree, that would have been better handled than...
It just sounds, sounds terrible.
Okay, um, ongoing planning items?
Um, I, I do have one thing I wanted to talk to you about. I, um, uh, you read the newspaper, you know that I'm planning to retire at the end of October. I would rather you have heard that...
That was just fake news.
Yeah, that was... No, it was real news. So I am planning on retiring at the end of October.
Retire or change your job?
I'm retiring.
Really?
Yeah.
Put me out?
Thank you for that blatantly false comment.
That means you can move to Cannon Beach.
No, I am. So, uh, the, the way this probably shakes out is, uh, I'm trying to get the, uh, city manager to look at hiring somebody, um, in the summer, so that we'll have some period of overlap. So, um, if that happens sometime in the July, August timeframe, you'll probably see my replacement, and I working together for those last few months before I leave. So, that's the plan. Uh, and, uh, the city council learned about this, uh, on Tuesday night at the meeting.
Wow, are you going to Arizona?
Some city west. No, I'm probably going to stay in the same place in Astoria I've been for the last 30 years.
I'll miss you, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
All right, good of the order.
Scott Schnire, P.O. Box 755, Cannon Beach. Well, we're going to miss you, uh, Mark. I know that the, uh, the city is aware that the FEMA maps are now final and been promulgated and delivered, uh, officially to the city, and I just want, I know your plate is full, but I encourage you to move as, with as fast as you possibly can, because every week is costing the town somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000 in premiums, which is going into the great hole of the FEMA flood fund, so...
I know two people that are paying $10,000 themselves, so, each person, so it's more than...
Well, but I fear, per week. So, we, we, we need to, we need to move at great, as great a haste as you possibly can. Every week will save some money for this town.
We have these, that amendment teed up for you, um, coming March or April.
All right, if that's it, we're adjourned.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.